This evening's meeting of the planning commission to order, it's the July first meeting. First item of business is the. Budge of allegiance. All right, we'll have a roll starting. Mister Songstead.
Mister Davis.
Mister Frankenbach.
And do we have? Matt, say, say here.
Yeah, you back. He said muted. Now you gotta talk.
Well, Matt's here. And we have announcements.
So as I, I think I emailed the commission just for announcement purposes. July twenty first, nine AM is the workshops for the land use component and the implementation component. Which are the two pending changes to the board. On top of that, we have the. The change to the RV park use table, the use table related RV parts. I think that goes before the board later this month. I want to say it's either the twenty third or the twenty seventh.
So it's twenty third. The workshop, is that a joint workshop?
Yes, so we have it advertised as a joint workshop, just in case we get a. Majority of the commission there, so feel free. And then we have the hearing on those two components in August. You didn't remember the date of that.
So is it, is it, is the workshop on thirty first? Or the land use component and the implementation?
Correct.
Is it, is it, if this is gonna be on the implementation component or?
It's for both, so the, the board had, we had two workshops and then a hearing on the land use component. So I think they should have a pretty good idea as to what they want changed. So that workshop was intended for them to finalize those changes and then schedule it for another, or and then adopt those changes at the hearing in August. The implementation component is, the focus of that is your thoughts as to what changes have been made. And then have a Q and A between the planning commissioner and the board. And see if they wanna make any additional changes as well. I think those are both scheduled for hearing in the same day.
Well, the changes we made to the implementation component were based upon, at least for the land use, was based on the land use component.
Right.
That we, that we recommended, so. Okay.
I'm still reviewing the changes to chapter six. I was working on it last week. I think we need to, what I, what I plan on doing is crafting, so the last direction I received was. We went from short plat to short subdivision and then he gave me some direction to go. From subdivision to long subdivisions, we have a short subdivision, a long subdivision. When I went to go implement all those changes, it really didn't make sense. The way we have the preliminary plat, the final plat code language, so I think what I'm gonna end up doing is having a procedure. For a long subdivision, a procedure for a short subdivision, and then refer both those to the plating procedures separately. So, just now, when I looked over it, like, trying to implement those changes, it, it just really clarified to me that. We need more, if we're gonna implement, if we're gonna modify that direction, would be really good to clarify that, that whole code in general, so. I hope to get that done this week and then set it for getting with this or, or this commission.
I thought we, I thought we already did a recommendation on that.
No, we only did workshops on it. We haven't done a hearing on it yet. So I, we are on a limited time because of the moratorium for that, for the minor land division, so. I need to get it scheduled for a hearing this month or early next month, so I can get before the board and get them to adopt it before October first. I think that's.
Does it make sense? Because of the deadlines and so on, does it make sense to have a joint workshop? Before our airing with the, with the county commissioners? Just to make sure, I mean, you're going through an awful lot, we've gone through a lot of work, you've gone through a lot of work.
Yeah.
And without getting any feedback from the county commissioners, that seems like, you know, that might not be well spent.
I can see if I can schedule that. I know their. Their time this month is taken up a lot by. VOE hearings, the board legalization hearings, so scheduling something with them is, is difficult. I don't know what their number of. Hearing items they had to hear this month, but they had a statutory deadline to meet those, to, to finalize all those hearings.
Just seems like from a conservation of resources. Get some feedback before you, you know, spend.
Yeah.
Weeks and weeks. Tweaking all those code sections or ordinance sections.
Yeah.
That some feedback might be. Appropriate.
That's a really good idea. So I. I did that with the chapter, like, we had, we did a workshop on the changes for chapters one and two, some. various procedure changes, and I have those mostly crafted and. Get those scheduled for hearing as well. So I had, I had initially workshop those with the board and then workshop them with planning commission, so I think they're pretty tight. Okay, well, I will, I can reach out to their admin and see if I can schedule something, a joint workshop. That's all I have for announcements right now.
All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda, which is the approval of June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Planning minutes, I wasn't there, so I have no really input on that. Anybody has any changes?
I don't think I've seen him yet. The last two meetings, I don't think have been posted yet, so we're now two meetings behind. We couldn't do the minutes from last time because they weren't ready, yeah, so.
I thought, you know, they're, they're, they were posted.
Yeah, really?
Yeah. I read them, read them. They look good to me, but since I wasn't there.
I looked over the weekend, I think it was, I didn't see them.
I, I looked today and I didn't see them, but I.
No, they're there. You go into the agenda. For today, you'd see them. Pretty sure.
Yep, they're there.
Yeah, they're there, and you had the, that file that you.
So it's last. The, the June third minutes, I guess, are, are pending review, but the June seventeen minutes are done. On, from our side and during your, in your document.
What's the holdup on the June third meeting?
I don't know. I was just told that's where they're at, so I can. I guess.
It's a complicated meeting, huh?
It's in Alex's inbox. He typically reviews them before we submit them to each commission for the pool.
Okay, everybody have a chance to read them?
No, I haven't seen them yet. Yeah, I want me to read it five pages real quick and tell you if I like it or not. I can do that if you'd like. Or somebody else, I trust anybody else to look at.
I think I reviewed these.
I think they're okay.
These minutes recently, I think it was.
The minutes from six seventeen.
It, it should be under today's agenda.
Oh, not under six seventeen.
Okay. We always struggle, where do you put them? Do you put them on the date they're gonna approve them, or the date of minutes before?
The day you're gonna approve them.
Both?
No, just the day you're gonna approve them.
Okay.
So, do you wanna keep Alan's signature on there for those minutes or put mine?
Actually, there were, there was a change. I think, I think you were during the meeting to.
Wrong date, wrong times. Well, I know I changed it. I changed it. Was five thirty, I changed it to four thirty.
Yeah, I know, it should be, it should, I think it should be Don to sign it.
Yeah, change, that's fine.
All right, so we'll do that. Or I could sign it and say four. Or Alan Songstead Chair.
I mean, it's, it's just a Word doc, it's easy to.
Yeah.
Update. Okay, so, all right, you can just, you can approve those as amended.
All right, any other changes, modifications? Not, they're approved as amended? Then we'll move to public comment. How many public comments?
Well, two people online, no one ever hands up.
Okay. All right, we'll move then to the pending ordinance changes. Workshop discussion on chapters three and four. We do, we do have a, a Word document that's. That was been prepared by staff. I guess we just go through that.
Where was that?
Same place, John, that today's.
No, it's on the front page.
Front page of.
Of the planning.
Yeah, under commission.
If you under your commission documents, planning, it should be listed right there as chapters three or the sections to review. I dropped that on there at the last workshop we had. But it gave us at least somewhere to start. I have had a number of, of. What's that?
Where is that?
Your very homepage.
What's a homepage?
Documents, planning. Actually, thank you, sorry, go ahead. And then I, so the last meeting, I think I was directed to produce, or it was requested that I produce a report for CUP's. Initial use permits. So I compiled, we have a land use database log. So I pulled all of those in and then produced a report out of our current software. With the caveat being that the status of those may not entirely be accurate, so that's what my admin was telling me when they, when they pulled these reports together and helped me out with this.
Those are, as I recall it, though, the, the reason we asked for that was to see whether any of the changes.
Yeah.
To, to the map where would affect a CUP or the validity of a CUP. I don't know how we can really do that.
I think the other option there is, when you start looking at. Reviewing the use tables, like, well, what's been the demand of this type of use over time? So we have this by year. For the recent ones, in the last six years, I have it by zoning districts. My next phase to, to, to build this thing out more is to see if I can get. GIS to plug in all the RP numbers, all the property numbers, and for their producer, a zone, of what the current zoning is for each one of these properties, so. That being said, some of these were listed from nineteen seventies, eighties and nineties, and I don't know what the zoning was at the time, because the, our database log doesn't have that, it just has.
I think the inquiry is, what is it today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what, and what are we changing it to? Is it a permitted use, or does it require a CUP? That's, that was kind of the genesis of the question, I think. So.
Well, as a starting point, then, it would be helpful to know what zone they're in today. Right? So we can figure out. At least today, is it a permitted use or a conditionally permitted use in, in zone, as since today, because some of them are pretty old.
Yeah. Tried to update the uses in this list with what the use table hasn't listed as today. Take some that just say comm towers, I updated that to communications tower. Some of those that are listed as communication towers, I'm not sure if they were. A cell tower, communication towers, we typically think of today. Some of them might just be like an FM radio antenna that was added, and it fit underneath that definition. I think I was mentioning to Mr. Frankenbach that. The public utility facilities are really broad definition in today's code. That was highlighted by someone from, it was a Vista or Northern Lights, I sat down with them. The definition of chapter eight is really broad, and I think either tightening that up. Or splitting it into several different uses, some permitted outright, some conditional permitted, might make a lot of sense. That being said, staff did go through chapters three, the, the Word doc that I have before you, and I think it's chapter three.
Yeah, there's.
It's not, it's not, it's not all of chapter three, four, it's just the, what we had pulled, pulled out as meaning to be reviewed initially. From there, I think, looking at this, this general, the specific standards by use. Also beneficial. We've had a number of folks asking for what the process is going to be. They know we're doing this review, so what's the process? When is, when are we gonna start posting these online? When are we gonna? Are we gonna go around the county and ask for public input, or what that's gonna be, so? Well, we're in the very initial stages of this, and I, as we get, as I get direction from the commissioner.
Well, I, for one, don't think it's necessary to go around the county with these changes. I mean, basically. So the problem I have with this, and, and we kind of dovetails into. What, what amount of public input and when. Uh, when, when I'm looking at this. We can go, we, we can pretend that there's not, we haven't recommended different changes to the land use component and the map. But that seems to me to be. It seems to me to be a waste of time. It seems to me we need to assume that the bulk of the land use component. And map are going to be approved. And that. The county commissioners are not gonna make wholesale changes. Now, I could be wrong. But it seems to me that going through these chapters. And just ignoring the inconsistencies between this zoning code as it exists today. And as it should exist, if the land use component was adopted, it's gonna be kind of a. Doesn't seem. Doesn't seem right. But, you know, that's my thought. What are your thoughts?
I guess I understood that the whole, or I thought I understood the whole reason for going through this at this point was to bring it into. I'll say conformance with the land use component as we wrote it. I, now, yes, I agree. If there's gonna be wholesale changes made to it, then that's kind of a reset and start over. And, and so I don't know. At this point, since we're a month and a half away from. Seems like we're a month away from even having an indication of what happened at that July thirty first workshop. And we're a month and a half away from. At the earliest, having to finalize the land use component finalized. I have a question about how much effort can we put into this?
Well, I guess that's, that's sort of, that's sort of where I was going.
Or should we better wait till some of the, I'll say some of the dust settles about the land use component? Before we get into this too deeply.
Well, that's, that's the issue.
Because it, it could be, you know, if it turns out, we work on this over the next couple, two, three meetings, and then there are major changes to the land use component. All that may end up being wasted effort.
It's like, I think that the, the descriptions of the, of the land uses, right, the land use descriptions. I don't think any of those were really challenged by the board at all. Right? If you guys think of anything that they wanted to modify drastically on that.
I thought they wanted, I, I thought there was an indication of the amount of one, they might want to. Add a industrial land use.
Like a light commercial or something like that, or heavy. So, I think if you look at. Like, a big chunk of our zoning designations, their forestry, your rural service centers, your, maybe that one will change. The pack forest, forestry, rural, suburban. Even Alpine, they could be beneficial to, to review the descriptions of those, and there are a lot of things that need to be updated. Spend our efforts, at least start from that. And then from there, start looking at the uses. But you're thinking, like, end of the month is only this meeting plus one more, so. It's not a so far away.
Well, you know, I'm perfectly willing to. Go through it, I mean, there's a lot of name changes, you know, like for transition to mixed use and. That kind of stuff. Uh, yeah, I mean, so I, I, so I guess what you're saying is that. We should assume maybe that there aren't going to be wholesale changes.
I don't think it's gonna be a complete rewrite by any means. I think it'll be, you know, eighty-five percent adopted by the board. They'll make a handful of changes. I think they've indicated they wanna update, grab the, the land use matrix, they wanna put back in there. A handful of other edits to it, so.
Yeah, I had suggested to Jake that maybe, maybe we would take, go and try to redraft their matrix to make it consistent with what the land use component is, but. Uh, I think the feeling was, let them handle it, right? So, okay. Well, with that thought, I guess we go through and we. Assume that. Most of what we did was, is gonna be adopted. Because otherwise, yeah, I went through this, as you probably saw, I went through it. You know, I just kind of put question marks where I, where, you know, it was inconsistent with the land use component, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't, didn't know what. Supposed to do with it, so certainly make those changes. There's a bunch of them, it's just brain boarding.
There's, there's a lot of ambiguity in this that could be really tight, so. Characterized by, right? That's been, anytime you see that phrase, it's been hotly contested among, you know, anytime it's been used. Whether it's characterized by steep slopes or characterized by, by certain uses ag or for other uses, you know, what does that mean? So. The, I think the, the cleaner you can draw those lines in this ordinance, the bet. I know that's something that the board, this board specifically, has had some real frustrations with, when it becomes characterized by steep slopes, like, but what does that either mean? Like, well, it's really up for interpretation. I can give you the reason or what, how it's been interpreted in the past, but just give me your. Your analysis and your interpretation, so.
Well, the thrust of the land use component. Was to eliminate slopes and soil types.
Yeah.
So we should do that.
Yeah, so that's why I was, that's why I was suggesting we can probably start with those, I think, some.
But, but, you know, but again, that's the same issue, I mean, it's whether or not they agree with that change. We don't know, so.
I don't recall anything from the workshops where they disagreed with that, do you guys?
No, but they weren't very specific about what their issues were. All right, well, let's just start going through it, we'll.
Well, one of the first things, just chairman, if you recall, that we were supposed to work on for tonight's meeting. Was coming up with a plan of how we're gonna attack this, and it kind of goes to what Jake alluded to, which had a lot of questions to the public. Um, but I'm more concerned with how are we as the board to attack this? I know I've started going through it and making notes on a copy. You just said you've gone through it and started making notes on a copy.
That was my, gonna be my next, my next question is, the other thing we could, we could try to outline is the process, like, what is? We, we're kind of starting with the, the zoning descriptions, but then what's gonna be the process to review the use tables? What do you want staff to, versus what, what is the commission gonna work on? Where, when do we want, you know, the most of public input?
My thought would be, we go through it. Section by section. I mean, I, I don't know how else you're gonna do it.
We don't, we're not the administrators of the code standards, so the staff's gotta inform us. When things are cumbersome, when things are sideways, duplicate, whatever.
Yes.
We're not there every day, so.
Yeah, we, we need to have that input. And we can, you know, we can do it at a meeting, you know, it doesn't have, you don't have to. Have anybody outline it. In fact, actually, Alex did a lot of work. On this, but. At, at least in, you know, maybe just me, but where, where he has a comment. That apparently relates to a highlighted section. He can't tell which highlighted section he's referring to.
You click on it and it goes to the highlight.
So it does?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, see, that's why you're an engineer.
So, staff went through while I was out, he's, so Alex put, his name's all over this, it was the planners giving him a bunch of input. During a, like a work session on a Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday morning. I think he said we, they made it through about half, and I sat down for another hour and tried to understand what changes they were, what changes they were suggesting and why. I can share my screen, if you, really, that's getting into the use tables, and that's, that's where we're seeing a lot of the problematic stuff.
Mine doesn't do that.
Should, it's a comment there.
I don't remember, is there a PDF version of it? Make sure you're in the Word version of the video.
I can create a PDF version.
No, no, it's, the word is. What the comment, what part of the text the comment is about, you can see that word.
So when we see a highlighted green something or other. Does that mean something?
Oh, I see, okay, mine, yeah, mine just did it. I know, I see, I see, okay. All right, well, let's, let's just.
I don't know. Sorry, I don't think I got an answer to my question.
I think they're all just the, the, the distinction between the different zoning description, zoning district. I went through and highlighted yellowed, like problematic areas, and I wanted them to focus on it. Looks like they went through and made some, like, edits to those as well. Like, that's as you get down into the use tables.
Yeah, so, you know, going through this. This is first looks to table three point three dash one. Are we gonna go through from the beginning? Or?
Oh, sure.
Or just what's been marked up?
This is a whole bunch of sections from the beginning that have.
Well, I have a question about the purposes. Section. Does it need to be anything more than A? Which is to establish districts compatible with the goals projected on the policies of the plan, so. And if not. If you think we need some of those other ones, I would challenge some of them. And edit some of them. But I don't see why the purposes aren't encapsulated in what was wrote there and paragraph A.
Because. B, B through I are, except.
They're all part of.
Yeah, including I.
Yeah, and there's probably other things in the comprehensive plan that aren't listed here, so it's both. Incomplete and in some areas problematic, meaning encourage affordable housing, that's, I don't think that's one of the goals of the comp.
Protect and stabilize land values.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true.
Yeah, I would suggest we eliminate B through I. Just have, not even an A, just, it would be the purposes are.
Remove some paragraphs, and you just have one.
Purpose of this chapter are to establish districts, blah, blah, blah.
Maybe it is not an R.
Yeah.
I mean, unless there's some reason why we need that list. I assume there was a list there currently.
Yeah, this is, this is.
That is, this is their copy base from.
Right, yeah, so.
So let's do that, let's, let's just make this one paragraph.
Thank you.
You can even get rid of A at that point, really.
Yeah, there's no.
Get rid of the A.
That's the purpose of this chapter is to establish. The purposes, actually, it should be the purpose of this chapter, not purposes.
Purposes.
Somebody's, we're all in the same version of something.
Yeah.
I'm going to.
That's probably me, I forgot that we're all sharing this, probably, aren't we?
So I have mine now, it's gonna be in the same spot, this is, you know, Jake would be able to copy today's, so.
Okay, then I'll start, stop, essence of it.
I, that's why I should have made a PDF for you guys to look at, so you check this out. Would say very now to be.
You're gonna change it?
No, because I, I already have a new version, so.
Oh. Okay.
There's some zoning map. Zoning map with interpretation.
So this was a recent code change. If you look at that, it was most recent change in twenty twenty-two. It's. There could be some stuff. It's more or less adopting the digital zoning map. The problem with that is the digital zoning map. Doesn't follow property lines, it doesn't follow center lines of road. So the faster we can get to adopting our new zone map, the better. But I understand when you get, when you get the, I'll find that, adopting first, so. Just know that's. Yeah, we kind of stole that language, I think, from another county that ended up with digital zoning map. I don't know if there's any other changes that I would suggest on that.
Changes to the official zone map shall be listed within the time format on the official zoning map, which is that part you said is still kind of up in the air?
No, that's, so that is our digital map, so essentially, so previously, maybe I'll explain the previous process, we had a map. Right, this is the official zoning map, it was signed by the commissioners, it was signed by the planning director, I think, or something like that. A paper map, and anytime a zone change happened to that map, you have supplemental zone map. Change with a parcel number and a legal description, so to look at, you'd have to look at the map, compare the X number of changes. To the map to see what the actual official zoning map was. If you roll backwards, so like nineteen seventy-eight, I had the original in my office. Or in, in our department, and they took whiteout, and they whiteout and then recolored the map, different colors as zones. or in, in our department, and they took white out and they wiped out and then recolored the map, different colors as zones should just happen. So so they went from that process to a paper process to now a digital process.
So in the digital process, how are you going to deal with the, the property line issue?
So, um, GIS staff and planning staff went around um, and I, we I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent. It's probably ninety five percent good. They marked properties that were split zoned and suggested a zone for the entire property. And then planning or GIS staff went through and listed or fixed anything that was off by you know, fifty feet or less and shifted, shifted the zoning to match the property lines. So we have a, we have a draft of that map. Um, we started it over a year ago, year and a half ago. As like a base to start with. So the, it becomes problematic because state statute only allows us to change zone, a zone on our property once every three years. So if we adopt it now, then we adopt a new land use map, then we want to change the zoning map again. We can't do it for three years. So we're in this kind of catch twenty two, but we have a really good product. We're ready to go and move forward with, but we really shouldn't until we know what the land use designations are and then your guys' input on it. So um, the land use map was really similar. It was off a bunch. So we did the same exercise a lot thicker and align that with property lines. We get a better version.
So is there, is there, are there split zone properties on the paper map that are not split zone on the digital map or vice versa?
Yes. But the official map is the digital map, not what, that's what was problematic was when we adopted the digital map, we adopted the problems along with it. But we've done a number of these interpretations of the zoning map, which allows the board to interpret the lines. They can say everything shifted upright. Yes, this is all, you know, R five in this area here that's zoned, you know, R ten really isn't right. So we've done that probably maybe a half dozen times in the last two years.
Okay.
We had discussions in the past about some mapping where you click on the parcel like now, when you go into the multi map, you can get information about the parcel. We've talked about having zoning history included in that. Is that?
It is.
On the, on the public viewer? I don't think it's on the public.
It's on the. If it's not, we can. So I know.
The zoning is on a public viewer.
The zoning, I don't know about the history of the.
But it's the history that I've, that we've been with. I'll check where things have been.
That's what started my question here. Cause I don't think I've ever combined it either yet. I saw this written.
Yeah.
But I've never seen that.
It's on the internal one.
But I know GIS went as far as like um, linking the ordinance number that changed, that changed the zone. So if something got a zone change from R ten to R five in, you know, twenty ten or twenty fifteen, um, then it showed that it just had the ordinance relate to the ordinance we can find it.
So it did. Okay. Cause that, I, I still think that's important, but should that be covered in this paragraph? To talk just.
That's essentially what it's saying is that it's being reflected on the digital map.
The history?
Nothing's saying it.
It doesn't specifically call out the history. It just says that when the change happens, it'll be, it'll happen on the digital map as well.
And then in past discussions, so well, it, it had to be after date such and such is reflected in the record because it's so sporadic. Tired to chase. I want to make promises you can't make.
I think they even go back to that. The ordinance that adopted the zoning map was five oh one or five oh two.
Five oh one. Yeah.
On the public viewer, it just gives the file number that changed. As well, Dave.
Does?
An ordinance number just gives file number. So uh, most of them will be AM ninety four and six. That's what started the last zoning change. We're, that thing.
I can, I can check in with GIS staff to see if we can make that public view or publicly viewable.
Yeah. It is, it is public record. And it's just uh, it, it's good information. So you can travel along and see what's going on on the property. Sure. From the neighbor's standpoint and all that stuff.
So since, um, you know, we're moving pretty far into the digital world, why, why would we? Why would we have any reproductions? Just the digital one is the digital one. You can look it up. So to me, to me, printing, printing reproductions is kind of problematic. I mean, digital one should be the one to look at period.
Yeah, I would agree. It looks like a lot of this language is left over the days when it were.
I, I would, I, so I would eliminate the last sentence basically.
And the one before is one or more.
One or more physical reproduction.
Right.
I do have a physical copy of the map in my office because it says I should.
Well, you can, cause you're the planning director, but that, but nobody else should have it.
It says it should be. So I have one.
But the official one, maybe we should change that too. Cause the official one should be the digital one, period.
That's what it is. Yeah.
Yeah. So whatever you have in your office really is just for convenience.
One or more physical re.
I think we're just stick with the digital sort of period.
Uh, Matt here, can you guys hear me? You know, you might want to uh, check with state statute because uh, I believe there's. Pardon?
Guys speak up.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I, I believe you probably need to go ahead and check with state statute because I believe there's something in there regarding both the zoning map and also the comprehensive plan land use maps.
There is. I mean, there has to be, you think there has to be a physical copy?
That's my understanding. I know there has to be for the comp plan map. And for some reason I, I thought the zoning map, you had to have an, uh, one official copy of that as well. Uh, and then it goes into detail about who all has to sign it. When does it, you know, get become effective? Uh, the clerk has to sign it. So forth.
That's true. How, how are you gonna sign a digital one?
You sign the ordinance that adopts it.
Okay. Yeah, we should look at that. Thanks, Matt. Or Matt, you can look it up.
Yeah.
I, I could give it a shot right now. And actually it's, I don't believe it is in Lupa. Uh, I will try there.
Yeah. Cause I just looked in sixty five eleven and it doesn't even mention a man.
Should, there should be a citation right here in the, in the section where, but why is there, is the official zone? Or Idaho code? Whatever. Or is that, that's probably importance. Probably back in five oh one. It cites the state code.
So if you go down to three eleven A, that seems to contemplate also a physical map, cause it has to be signed by the chairperson.
Yeah, that whole last sentence. Probably go away.
There's a whole certification process that now it's the next sentence. I don't know whether, you know, if this is required by state law or not, but seems to me that to the extent reasonably possible, the best representation of what the zone is, is the digital one. Cause it can be changed. It doesn't have to have the
I mean, that is what everyone uses, right? If they, the first thing they're gonna do is like, if they want to check the zoning on their property is go to GIS and look for digital map. I think that was the main rationale behind adopting a digital map is that no one really comes into the planning department and requests to look at the copy of the map.
So it seems to me we need to have some indication of whether or not what's in three eleven A is required somewhere.
I just downloaded the entirety of Lupa. They won't put, let's see if it.
I don't think it's. Not very understanding.
Where would it be if it was that Lupa?
I know. Why wouldn't it be in Lupa?
I mean, really, I mean, you look at all of three eleven, it really it really is contemplating it, it be, be as well as contemplating a physical map.
Yeah.
I see it's fine, but B is.
I think that, that goes right in line with, with how we have it listed under three ten A. Cause just changes are listed on the electronic format. And this just says, as soon as it happens, make those changes.
Right. But, but, but right now three ten and three eleven don't really track, right?
Changes shall be entered on the official zoning district map promptly after the amendment has been approved by the board. I don't know.
That's fine. Still.
It could be easily.
Yeah, that could be there, I guess.
With the entry of the official zoning map specifying the file number, ordinance number.
I guess as long as you're.
Yeah.
Always referring. As long as you're, as long as you're always referring to the official map, which is digital.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And as long as the digital map gets updated, so we can actually see those things.
And that's what our process is that, that the, once a zone change is approved, we take the legal for that and then we, we push everything down GIS and hey, make effectively this change, update the map and they do it pretty quick.
Long as that map is backed up on, on eighteen search.
Probably a couple of files too.
Yeah.
All right.
This is three twelve really doesn't jive with a digital map.
No. But maybe we can just eliminate that section.
Just kind of make the question of, well, if what's happening at the electronic version does ever disappear. Yeah, I was gonna say the electronic version can become damaged. Your droid. I'm not sure about difficult to interpret because the nature, number of changes, but
Well, if it's backed up though.
Well, yeah.
Yes, but still there's humans involved.
Yeah. So courage. I, I don't know.
Wherever there's humans involved, it's not available. So.
No less, well, no less volatile than the paper copy that's in the bank bars.
I mean, yeah.
For a while that was missing.
I think it's much less likely to happen, but I'm not sure. I would say it's impossible to happen. So it may still warrant. I think there's some language in here about what to do if it does become damaged.
The under three twelve A where it says the board is made by a resolution. They, they can't adopt um, a zoning map by resolution, has to be done by ordinance. So I'm serious. A resolution is just saying, yeah, you can do that for comp plan, but not for.
So the intent under three twelve B was that you went back to a prior version and kind of tried to figure it out from there, recreate. Would that be something, would be the only viable option? Should the electronic version just disappear? And if that's the case, do you want to put something in here that says, you know, the director keeps in his office, one copy of the official version of the map?
I think that's what we had deleted up here.
Did he? Well, uh, but, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, would that really be the only alternative is that once a year, the planning department makes a hard copy of what's on file and locks it into safe somewhere along with all the paper ordinances so that it could be recovered?
Yeah, we do somewhat regularly download. Well, I, I, I told staff to download our code like twice a year, right? Just and have a digital copy of it. Um, not printed, but have a digital copy. I think we could do the same thing as you, you hit print on the map and download a, like a high resolution PDF that could be, yeah.
Okay.
But it, it doesn't need to be a paper copy.
No, I don't think so.
I think it's still, you can, you can download it onto a whatever they call some.
Oh, right.
It's separate hard drive. Archive, whatever. Okay. Three fourteen?
Seems appropriate. Is there a staff issue with that?
I don't think so. These rules for interpreting the zoning district br- boundaries. We used all of these when we were updating the zone map, the digital map that was somewhat off. We kind of followed these as a good guideline, which I under it's really good to have in the code. The only, um, frustrations, I would say are the restriction on the board having interpretive uh, authority. Where something is off five feet on the digital map. That means we have to go to the boards and board. Is this five feet? Okay. Like, is this all, you know, R five and this five feet is suburban really isn't there? So having some discretion, maybe we change the fifty foot to a staff level decision. Um, and this is a, a board interpretive call, only so that in the future, if we find out that um, something is off just by a small amount, fifty feet or less, and maybe twenty five is better. I don't. I'm just, I'm just giving you kind of a, what we, what we've seen is problematic. Then have that like a staff level decision. The H um, already covers anything else. And it talks specifically about the board. So the board then has the authority to interpret the map as they will, regardless of, of A to G. And then this I is like this other kind of catch on. But again, it all gives it to the board.
You, you know, but Matt here, you know, there was a, a file here, I don't know, several months ago. And the board actually decided not to make a determination to leave it. And it was, it's kind of mind boggling. So I, I do hear that we, I feel we do need to have some closure for some of these folks instead of just saying, well, we're just gonna leave it as is. That is, uh, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I think the only issue is whether fifty feet is appropriate or some lesser amount. I, I don't know. I have a, I don't have a feel for that. I mean, there are some small lots in the county of fifty feet would be the whole lot, but yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
What do you think, Jake?
Where to draw the line? Cause fifty feet on a two hundred acre parcel of a forest forty zone is a lot different than fifty feet on a quarter acre acre lot in the rec zone. So.
That's fifty by a hundred.
Yeah. You, you could change it to a percentage of the overall parcel or something.
I was just gonna suggest.
Yeah, you could say a five percent. It's just.
What does our, we have an allowable, uh, I forget what it's called, but some discretion administrative variance. Yes.
Yeah.
Um, everybody's bad percentage is a ten, I think.
So it depends. Like the eternal ones that I, so you have administrative exception. Yeah, that one memorized. It's one foot.
One foot for. Ten percent for.
What is it for lots size, I guess?
I think it's five percent, uh, ten percent.
Ten percent. So I mean, ten percent for this purpose here would seem to be very much a performance with a ten percent administrative exception, uh, make it ten percent of the lot size.
But then we're, we're using like a digital tool to measure and they were going off of a map, which is a hundred percent accurate. So we're using some very semi accurate. Um, but we, we could, we could call it ten percent.
I have thought about that because that kind of, that's, that, that same subject has been brought up like in other contexts of, you know, we could slopes, for example, or you know, how, how you're gonna have a guy measure what percent of his property is a just slow wall, fair towards your degree of accuracy and so forth. Is there a way to specify? That we're just talking about, you know, uh, a GIS map level of accuracy. We're not talking about a formal survey.
Right. Well, that, that's the problem. When you adopt the, a zoning map for the whole county and we do it legislatively, we're not gonna do this as a survey accurate document, right? So you have these lines, like this looks to be about six hundred feet and then it splits to a different zone. Looks to be, right? So what that is and how do you survey that? I have no idea. So what that is and how do you survey that? I have no idea. And that's where split zone property becomes somewhat problematic, right? Cause. Our lines when we adopt them are not survey accurate. It's it's a lot different than when a quasi judicial someone comes in and says, I want to change to this zone and here's my legal description for my property. We follow that legal description.
But but it was put in the context of what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
You've discovered a split zone property and we're we're trying to build in an allowance, you have to allow that property to no longer be split zone.
Yeah.
Within some limitations.
Yeah.
It seems like we ought to be able to define. The level of accuracy. That's required. Uh, in order to make those determinations such that it doesn't require somebody to go out and get a survey. You couldn't get a survey anyway, because you don't know where the line.
Exactly.
Lies on the map in the first place, right? It's that's arbitrary to some extent.
We could do a both, right? We could say um. Like a ten percent or fifty feet, whichever is less. So that we don't have a two hundred acre parcel and, you know. Twenty five acres of it is split zone and now we want an interpretive call. So you you limit, you really limit uh. The.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's palatable when you look at. You don't want to give so much authority to the bureaucrats. You want to like really limit. Like, give us a refined box offer with them. And anything past that, it goes up to that age. So, okay. You know, if I look at this and it's like. We're at. Forty nine and a half, maybe fifty two feet, or it's at twelve percent. Okay, let's take this to the board. Like, this is just beyond my inability of my my jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Rather than call it staff, um. The code has a definition for planning director. It's like playing director or the designated. So I always rather than say planning staff or anything else. The the planning director um position is codified in code under chapter one, and then it's defined in chapter eight, so. That's why I always refer back to plan director whenever it seems.
Sounds good.
Not to see fifty feet. Or or ten percent.
Whichever is less.
Anything else on those, Alex, if you recommend changes? On the interpretations? Now. I think this will help a lot because there's a few, there's a lot of times where you just have a sliver on something. And it's like, uh, let's take this to the board or they have to go reason, so. Okay. Now we're into the getting into the meat of it. Three point two, the zoning just district establishments.
Why do we have the minimum loss sizes? On. Rural forestry. We don't have it on suburban. Because there's a, because it's a, it's a range.
That's a good question. I don't know, probably because it's a range.
Well, is it necessary to put that in that? I mean, it doesn't seem to me that it's. I was gonna say. Similar to another matrix.
Yeah.
Maybe it shouldn't be here at all.
Okay.
Just just identify all of the zoning designations and the map symbol that goes with each of them. But I believe it at that.
I I agree. Um.
And I would probably separate in that context then. A out into two.
So. If if we're going to separate those two into two different.
Yeah.
Zones rather. So right now, the way they have these is zoning districts, which means like this zone has two, the zoning district has two zones within it. So we could update. And the reason they went that direction is so they can have our five and our ten in one zone. Ag forest ten twenty in one zone of ag forest. So it's a zoning district that has two different designations.
What's the point of that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a naming convention so they can lump together those ideas. Yeah.
When we when we refer to them, we refer to them as ag ten or ag twenty. But I think it should be some different districts.
Yep.
Because.
That's that's fine with me.
It implies that there's different criteria or something.
Yeah, so if you look at how they're. How these zoning districts are explained, right?
Yeah.
Down.
Descriptions.
These descriptions. Um.
Some distinction.
Especially like your ag forest, because it says, okay, ag forest ten or twenty is this, and then ten is this other little bit. So it's all lumped into one designation, right? Or one description.
That that was so. Just.
I think if we do this, it'd be great. We just have to change district out of all these to forestry zone, so.
Right. Um. Back in the in the first sentence under three twenty point two. It says, in accordance with the prison by who quote, and the objectives set forth in this code. What objectives? Cause we've all, each one of these says the purpose of the zone, the purposes, the purpose, is that an objective? It doesn't sound like it.
Change that to the purpose.
It's just somebody starts looking for the objectives, but where are they? I I yeah, I don't, I don't automatically see any or easily see any objectives. What is needed?
Is it fair to refer back to the comp?
At this. Cause that's where. Having policies and objectives in the comprehensive plan. Or is that problematic for some reason? It's kind of sweeping.
What's the whole point of three twenty anyway?
It's just explaining, it just gives an explanation.
Of what?
Of what what this next thing is.
Here by classified. Wonder if we just remove. So the table falls into three twenty point two. There's purpose.
Could have fallen to three twenty point one that has almost the exact same title. Aside from the word purpose.
There's a patient. Now, like, well, that makes sense. Point one is purpose. Point two is is is. Designations established. I don't know. Yeah, I think that's the reason to separate my, I I do agree that the objectives languages. But the objectives kind of. Unless there's the. It's just a question. Well, I mean, I'm also okay with Don's suggestion of referring back to purposes, because we talked about. Cause the code wouldn't necessarily have objectives.
Right.
And and the purpose, if you go back to the burden, the purpose was to bring this into correspondence with the complaint. So there is the reference back to the.
There there already. If you go back to. I don't remember. I think it's in chapter one or two where it specifically says. All of the ordinance here are adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and it starts at the very beginning of a whole title sentence. Everything after this.
Yes.
Is in accordance with. It's so great at our jobs, but promising it's all perfect.
Is to challenge Phil about every other hearing.
So and you could reiterate that several times throughout where we can refer.
Yeah.
And leave that as the side.
I think that's probably better. We didn't. Anyway. Okay, so.
So how are you obviously suggesting to modify this? Take out and objectives set forth in the code?
Or just say and and the policies and objectives set forth in the comprehensive land use plan.
Or you can say and the purpose set forth in this code.
Right. I think those are the two, those are the two alternatives. Right, either one. And the purposes set forth in the code, refer back to the complaint anyway. If if we're still gonna have that grand statement at the beginning of this zoning code. Now that it's it's it complies with the comprehensive plan, that may cover it. It it'd be in that sense. Well, it's in, it's in uh. Twelve dash three hundred. It looked at just earlier.
Right.
That talks about the complaint.
Right.
So and that's the purposes, right? If I went to look for the purpose, this is all the purposes of this chapter right there.
And. Yeah, our goals, policy and objective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Oh, this the purposes said, boys, that's cool. Yeah. Very.
Yeah, I I I think purposes i- is a lot better. We gotta get rid of objectives because. You know, it's not the objectives. People are gonna start saying, well, we need to go ahead and incorporate those objectives in the comprehensive plan in in deciding what the uh. The zoning designations are actually going to be when it's supposed to be the policies of the comprehensive plan. So I think the way you have it right now is great.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna eliminate. Table three point one, we're gonna eliminate the uh minimum sizes. We're gonna create two zones, ag forest. Well, okay, now the the header of the thing says zoning districts and map designations.
Yeah.
And then just goes on designation. We're gonna. Get rid of.
Back designation should be out of there.
And that did.
No, no, no.
Sure they. Cause here we list the actual districts, forestry, ag forestry, rural.
Yeah, there's, yeah, these aren't the map.
These are. The United States of the District today in twenty. Well, they they should be.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. So I think the table should say zoning just zoning districts. Yeah, take out map map designations. I mean. Unless a map designation is just referring to the symbol. Well, I I think so. You gotta make that connection, but. Just say zoning districts. So where we is zoning districts and map symbols. But. Isn't it self explanatory? If you had a zoning district, zoning district, and here's the map symbol for it, why do you need to put it in there? And. It's just.
It's a title.
Yeah. Kind of safe.
Should not be designation, so.
I mean, I assume it's. The key on. Yeah. That's. Yeah. When somebody's looking at the map, they're gonna not gonna come back and look at this table.
But this code, this table is the one that says this is where your authority is.
Yeah. So then. So either way, zoning districts and map symbols or just zoning districts that. The the bold type of the top of the table should say zoning district. And map simple.
So. Where do we land on zoning districts versus? Just calling them zones.
Oh, I thought we'd gone with just zones and gotten rid of dishes altogether.
Well. This is some technical term or there that.
One of the, one of the background arguments is. It it's a zoning is a district. It's not just a zone that applies to one person. It's a district. Hmm, just like a uh area, confluent area. Oh, it's just with that argument, trying to keep them. Petually the the same district, same area. But I mean, it 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 aids in that discussion.
Okay.
Without it, uh. You still make that argument, but it it doesn't. You know, it's just all the little words that carry to a discussion and a conclusion. That's a pretty common. Commonly used term is is a zoning district student.
We we still want this listed as our five or do we want just listed as rule?
Just. I think it should be rural residential for. Or rural, whatever we call it officially, but yeah.
I think you call it rural residential on the land use component, right?
Yeah. Yes, so that's the land use designation, right? Yeah. The the zone could be different.
Yeah.
Could be different, we'll see.
But that's a question I had. What is the point of having a different? Zoning district. As opposed to a. Off plan map designation.
Zoning district is the law, not that designation is. A stepping stone.
Well, I understand that. Why does there need to be a difference? If one, the cop plan says this is rural residential, why would zoning naturally say that several residential? Why doesn't one follow the other? Aren't they linked? Guess my question.
Um.
Well, that's right, too. Plus, the confluent has land use designations. That was our discussion. The the that designation word sits in the confluent, not in the zoning code. So zoning districts is the next step. Following the designation. But state law requires it, too. Yeah, yeah, that's where it started.
I get all that. I'm just asking it. We've got something on the comp plan that's. The area is marked down, it's designated as. Arrow ag forest. Rural residential, rural residential.
Because some of those land use designations allow for multiple different zones. Their pure, their mixed use.
Right.
It allows for. Several different zones in there. Where some of these other ones, they align directly. Ag forest is another one that allows for tens with twenties. Rural residential currently allows for fives or tens as proposed, it's only allowed for fives.
That's helpful, thank you.
Mixed use is probably the biggest example of that.
Maybe the only example, yeah, but.
Ag here is the other one. So you guys called out um. In the proposed land use component, the zoning designation for rule is is rule five. So we can have it call it rule five and then the symbol just be five.
Sure.
Unless the board changes, then we'll change it back.
Pending pending action then. So Alex, Alex uh raised a question on. Rural Service Center, what was the issue there?
Um, maybe rename it, that's what you put down.
Why? Trying to recall our conversation. Yeah, I can, I could, I can understand maybe that we shouldn't be using the word rural. But that's what it is. It's a rural service center, but it's not in any. You know, actually, that it is an interesting point because as it's currently. As it currently exists, I guess. Rural Service Center is not allowed in any rural districts.
I love that. You asked his opinion, then you argued with yourself. The attorney and he's.
Don't argue with somebody.
He said, that's a good point, and then you kept going.
So that's why you, that's why you said it. Uh, so what would we call it?
Service center.
Service center. Yeah, a little like, right?
A little like. In a, in a. You you define. And what could have been a rural area, I don't know. But it's basically, basically, I understand it, where they're they're basically in recreation. And uh, commercial. And uh.
A couple outliers around.
Yeah.
Um. Around ag forest and rural, but those are outliers. Probably zone that way. For in two thousand eight or something like that.
Well, they're clearly are.
But they follow the mixed use, they follow um. Uh, I don't recall what the proposal says now, but.
Well, I know, I know that there are rural service centers that currently exist. In rural districts.
Right.
But I think going forward, that's probably not gonna be the case. So, yeah, I'm okay with just making it service center.
We called it out in the land use component, still called it rural service centering in descriptions, so.
We did bring that up during the workshop.
Yeah, that's one thing. If if you want to drop that menu, I'll ask the board to update that. Under the map designations, and the last line says appropriate zoning districts include, and you have a list, right? That's where I pull the arc, the rule five is from that list. So you call that rural service center in a neighborhood commercial, for example.
Yeah, that's just a name, but but the the theory there is the same. I mean, basically, we allowed it only in. On rural areas.
Right.
So. Um.
You can always call it neighborhood service center. So then you're gonna, that's a little wordy, but. Uh. I think that.
But you know, might get confused with neighborhood commercial or whatever.
Yeah, that's a, that's a complaint designation.
So there's. There is a zone.
Or which zones did we just say were allowed there? Was rural service center one of them?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood commercial was allowed, uh.
So neighborhood commercial and neighborhood service center and plus some other things.
Yeah, real service center and recreation and all in the neighborhood commercial.
Yeah. Maybe 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 neighborhood service centers is. It is wordy, but maybe that's good. Service center to me is too vague. I I was that different than just a commercials.
Well, and I think. Maybe the thought too was um. Rural Service Center is. Uh. But I mean, to be honest, not a lot of people like rural service center. And I think it's uh maybe a connotation. Yeah, it has a negative connotation to it because. Um, it's essentially putting. Um. Like commercial uses are even more like commercial uses in those areas. Or people, most people. Don't think they belong. Um. So.
Well, it definitely creates confusion because. Yeah, I think there was confusion on the RV park deal because. Yeah, I think there was confusion on the RV park deal because they included or included rural service center. Cause it just had the name rural in it, I think, not not understanding that. That zone is really not in rural areas. Well. Well, neighborhood service centers, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, but I I kind of agree with Tavon. What is service, what what are they, what's the, what's the? Like what, what's the?
Like a small grocery store or a small service station, whatever, you know.
You could call it neighborhood commercial. And which really, that's what it is, it's neighborhood commercial, it's. It's small commercial uses, right?
So there'll be a land use designation and a zone?
No, I, we can uh call it like commercial. Oh, it is neighborhood commercials.
There's no prohibition against that.
Yeah. No, not at all.
I'd be okay with that too. Neighborhood commercial would be alright.
Yeah. So in addition, so commercial is one zone, and then neighborhood commercial will be another?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that closer aligns with. What it is, I guess their question is. Like what, what do you want that zone to do?
Yeah, you still have to. Cause the description of the zone.
There's a big area that is just like. High density residential that's in this rural service center. So not, it allows for that currently. So we not want that anymore, or even whatever we want the uses to be.
You have to get to those descriptions.
Okay, yeah, I think we we handle that when we get to the description of any. I mean, any of these, you can call it what you will, but it's a description that really says what's happening. And I don't know that has to be so instructive in the, in the. There's only go through the descriptions first, then come back and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna put a, I'm gonna put a question on the table. For their consideration, do we need it at all?
Need what?
That this service center, does it serve any purpose that that commercial or suburban? Wouldn't serve anyway, so how are they different?
I'll tell you what I think.
But you can't because. Most of them are in rural, it's which we're saying we're not gonna allow anymore.
But what purpose are they performing?
The only, the only difference I see is scale. Right, they're small. They're, they're not, you know.
Yeah.
Two miles for uh both sides of ninety-five through Sagal or whatever it is.
There and west of the lake, is that rural service center?
I mean, where the grocery store, right?
Yeah.
Uh, that's rural service center.
Yeah, so it's got a grocery.
Maybe there's three. Is Coolin, is Coolin a rural service center?
Coolin has a lot of rural service center, um. Millies has a lot of rural service center.
The whole Lamb Creek area.
Yeah.
There's a big grocery store.
I'd say that's probably the biggest concentration of rural service center.
I think the other one is up at uh.
That's where the golf course is.
Upper Pec. In ninety-five, isn't that gas station, rural service center?
It's like any one building.
I believe that's commercial, I'm gonna show you this, if I.
So relative to those. You talked about.
This purple area is probably the largest volume. There's a smaller area right here. Um, there's this area down the center.
Oh, yeah, between the two roads.
And there is.
So, so if you can go back to to Coolin. So the only thing that's a rural service center there, so that, that basically is. Up, the purple area is boat. Uh, repair.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, story.
The fire station is a rural service.
Right. And then if you go over to the Lamb Creek area, that wreck.
So, but my question is, why couldn't that be commercial?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a very good question.
That's.
I wanna say, there's, yeah, there's like one lot there. There's.
Which that, that location makes no sense to me. I think that's the base store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing off graphic lightning, isn't that where the solar, back with solar and the little gas station up there?
The clean has somewhere along the the frontage here, which again, that could be commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a gas station and a bar, right?
Yeah, there's a. A handful of like just commercial like activities, so.
Yeah.
And the, and the commercial is. Is that, is that industrial? That was industrial, right? That's the mill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what about Samuel's? Samuel's and C.
I think Samuel's is commercial, there's this really. It's like a lot odd sliver of split zone on this property. I have no idea how that happened.
Cause that, that the lake, Walsh Lake was gonna be something. And it fell apart. That's back in the week.
I mean, it's just something to consider, uh, yeah. Once, once you decide it's not gonna be located in a rural area. Uh, I'm not sure how you would distinguish between. The rural service center and just straight up commercial.
This is.
Or I guess rural service center does allow residential, but you could deal with that suburb.
Right, yeah, well, it, I mean, it's kind of like a, tha- that's why I was saying, it's kind of more like a light commercial zone where. You can have a little bit more commercial uses than you can in suburban or recreation or. But you can't have as many as you do in commercial, I mean, they both allow residential uses at this moment, but.
Just like commercial, so neighborhood.
How would you draw the?
You know, just make up, make up the criteria, and no more than, none of this and some of that.
Yeah, so if you take like, for instance, like, let's take boat storage. Um, boat storage right now is permitted outright in commercial, but conditionally allowed in rural service center, and it has a size. So you can still have a, you know, you can have a hundred acre rural service center parcel, but you're only allowed to have ten thousand square feet of storage. Or if you had a hundred acre uh commercial property, you could have thirty-five percent of your lockup, or you have thirty-five acres of buildings. I mean, it, it, there's the limits there of, you know, you can have the same uses of between that and. Uh, you can have the same uses, but just. With more conditions or uh conditionally permitted or something along those lines.
Well, but if you, if you were gonna eliminate the rural service center and make it commercial. Then you, then you probably would have to make a lot more of those commercial uses. Conditionally permitted. Not just permit.
Right.
Like boat storage.
Does both stores really need to be conditionally permitted?
Yeah, why? You might have an awful lot more, more sports stories than you want. It's not, not, not a lot of attractive use.
We have some ideas for, for storage when we get down to the use table. Uh, the, the planners and I went through this last.
So all those boat storage, all that boat storage along fifty-seven. In the Lamb Creek area, that's, that was just out, like, no, that's, that's rural service center, so that had to have a conditional use permit.
Yeah, unless it was there prior to two thousand eight.
No, there's a lot of this, I think.
Sure, yeah.
Since two thousand eight.
But are they, are they used or are they set to make it?
No, they're used.
Yes, that's it, or full, the demand, demand is there. So why are they conditioned, why are they additionally?
It's also low impact on services, like what does it take for sewer and water? That's why many stories in Sagal blew up because. There's no availability of sewer and water for major commercials, so you're gonna go. Path of least resistance, right, that's typical economics, so. We're gonna do highest and best use based on the services available.
Yep.
I, I think the only impact. That one that should have just visual.
Yeah.
It, it seems like there's other ways to deal with that.
Standards.
Yeah, I think the part of the standard that we. Um. Came up with in the. Use table is having it all being closed to a building, unless it's commercial or industrial, then. They can have outdoor parking with some stipulations, but that, yeah, the visual appeal is the.
Well, these are, the ones I'm referring to are all enclosed. They're, they're totally enclosed. But they're still big buildings.
Right.
Drive through safe.
Doesn't look like a rural area. Even, even that could be dealt with, I think, through standards, you can just create it, right?
Yeah.
People don't like it, but you could, if you wanted to.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's the issue, that's leading us to say. Well, you don't wanna, you don't wanna. Eliminate the distinction between commercial and rural service center, because then we're opening up to these. Lots that have large percentage coverage with storage buildings. Well, another way to deal with that is to plant trees, so you can't see the large percentage of. The property that has storage buildings on that, right? Then you're allowing to use, like Don says, it's clearly a use that's in demand throughout the county. I don't know what the population of boats that require storage in the winter is, but it's a large number, I'm sure.
Given the number of lakes we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
And it. I mean, it seems like there's never enough. Yeah, they're, they're always building more.
And people are renting out their barns and everything else, yeah, because there, there's not enough.
Yeah. I don't know, just a thought, I, I, I'm not suggesting necessarily that we should eliminate rural service center, but I'm, I'm. Thinking ahead that we're gonna have a hard time drawing the distinction. Between that and commercial.
Uh, yeah, once you get the rule out of it.
Yeah. Well, I think you have to go to the Houston's. That's where, that's where.
The other note on here is to get rid of Alpine out of Alpine Village.
No, to get rid of Village out of Alpine.
Oh, sorry. So, um, that suggestion came from Daniel Brett because. Uh, I mean, he's had his experience up on the mountain, and a lot of people. Um. Confuse Alpine Village with just the Schweitzer Village itself. And not the entire area, I mean, it's mostly all Schweitzer that's zoned Alpine Village anyway. Um, but. If, I mean, it's the, I mean, if it's the only zoning district. Um, or if it's the only area that's zoned in that fashion. I, I don't know. It, it just seemed as a point of confusion.
Uh, excuse me, I, I mean, I'm fine with that, Alpine is the real distinguishing characteristic, right?
Yeah.
Right, and it's.
That's just an idea.
Yeah.
I, I love it, heartburn, either way. I think you might get some pushback saying, well, you know, we need to confine it to the village.
Right.
Sort of is what it is, you know.
Right. Well, that's funny, so in the um, in the map designations under the land use component. Uh, uh, under recreational community, appropriate zoning districts include Alpine, rural service center and recreation. So we dropped the village and then.
Oh, well, there you go.
You guys were already too.
Okay.
Okay.
So what do we decide to do with rural service?
I think I, I changed it to neighborhood commercial and highlighted it, I colored it, come back to. Once we start talking about uses and descriptions, or descriptions for uses, so. We, we had a decent discussion about it, we're not a result yet.
Well, I think it, it, it may work itself out when we get to the descriptions and the use tables.
Yeah.
So now we're going into the. Descriptions. Now, here's where we call every one of them as only district.
Yeah.
District, 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 so. It's a green, so it means goat, goat.
I don't know if I did. We didn't wanna touch these yet, cause we didn't.
Why, yeah, there's.
Yeah.
They're, they're peed chicken. There were more important things to do.
Yeah, so we, are we in forestry district now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's next on the list. So, um, under one A, what climatic characteristics are we talking?
Listen, is it more rainfall or? Forestry district area than there is a.
Well, that would be amazing if it did.
I'd like to delete all that and just say applying that zone to large contiguous areas. Uh, make it possible to sustain timber growth and harvest over time. Get rid of all that site soil climatic characteristics.
Well, you could just say wear conditions. Make it possible to sustain timber growth and harvest over time.
Yeah, but that. So what makes?
Either way, I think you need to eliminate all that other stuff.
And our five are, are rural area where the same. They grow trees here, just what I. During the process of changing an old field that's never had trees on it to a forest. My property, we're in our ten. So. So I mean, if, if, if we close something that absolutely distinct to that area. That's the challenge, but.
Well, the, the. Think the key there is large contiguous areas.
Yeah. Yep. Um. So either those qualifiers, as if like a large contiguous area. But we're not relying on soil anymore. Um, and what are? Site characteristics, a little climatic characteristics.
Well, since we're getting away from soil and. I think we eliminate that. I, I think, I think you just. Again, as Eric suggested, eliminate those.
Oh, this is characteristics.
This is a forest forty.
Forest forty, isn't this generally production timber in public lands?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Why don't we just say that?
That, it says that. Yeah. So. Let's get rid of the mountain tops and remote areas of the county.
Yeah, I.
And the roads and everything and just saying.
And, and because it is um. Primarily public land. Well, I think three is probably not. We don't provide anything on public land.
Well.
But there's still a lot that's non-public land.
Yeah, but then that's private, most, in the case of the forest forty, it's.
John Hancock.
It's private timberlands. It's up to, it's not up to us what they allow on their properties, it's up to them. What they allow or don't allow.
Well, and even beyond that, it's same for service or IDL, it's up to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't tell them to provide a campsite or whatever. Yeah, so I think I would eliminate three.
It looks okay. Well, yeah, I mean. Sort of self limiting, isn't it? This is mostly public land.
Well, public land, yeah, but we still have to include the private land. That's out there and, and. I think we should sell any places where the forest service has leased lots. Even up in the mountains. All the historic lots that were there, then in national forests, there's a house there, so they lease it.
Yeah, but even, even lots, there's a, there's a lot of. Federal lots that are leased around Presley, but, but we don't have anything to say about them.
Right.
Right, that's totally within the jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Do they even get building location permits on federal land?
Yeah, if it's not, the only time they're, they're exempt is under uh state government.
Yeah, but the federal permit is same.
Yeah. Yeah, we have jurisdiction over any government property that unlicensed state now. Yeah, I know.
Let me back to what you can apply this to, then you made the comment that um. Forest tree, if it's not public lands, it's gonna be private, you know, John Hunt Hancock owns big hundreds of stake or parcel. Therefore, we can't really do anything with it anyway. But I think we need to remember that any time John Hancock couldn't sell that. With developer. To somebody else that could come in to do something, so just because it's predominantly controlled by. You know, big timber companies.
No, but the, the context was providing for recreational. We can't provide the recreational opportunities on John Hancock's property. But we, we, we can establish a, we can put it in a forest forty zone. And if it gets sold, it's in a forest forty zone. Which has limitations on its use, right? And if it was sold to a developer, uh, in all, in all likelihood, that developer would have come in and ask for a conflict designation. At a lady at a zone chain.
Yeah.
To do it, unless they're planning to develop a, a lot of. So, I, but I think. I think B could be more explicit, more, more direct. Uh, because. We say included in these areas are most of the state and federal lands. Which are managed for forest production or recreation, I don't, I don't think it's included, I think that's what it is. I think these, the, the first sentence is good, use of this zone is appropriate areas designated as remote ag forest in the con plan. These areas are primarily. Public lands owned by the state or the federal government. And large tracts of private land. And large tracts of private land held by timber companies. And then you could say included in these areas are, or or these areas are typically located in mountain tops and remote areas of the county with few access roads, it's kind of that, rework that second sentence.
I'm not, I'm not sure that that's completely accurate, though.
Well, and and I actually think, I actually think it is. Because I know some timber companies who own some land on, you know, paved county roads right now. And just because it's privately owned for timber management, should not throw that into a Forest Forty designation, it should be it should be whatever area and whatever qualifiers it meets. And that's come, I believe we should keep some language in there, uh, you know, the remote egg forest land. Or the remote areas of the county where a few or no access roads have been construction, constructed. I I think we need to keep that in there because like I said, I I know some timber companies who have, uh, have some large acreage on maintained county roads right now, and just because they're owned by a timber company. I don't think we need to throw them into an egg forest. Land use district.
What do they, what do they, what do they zone now?
Uh, a lot of them are zoned even down to rural, rural five in some of them.
Well, we we wouldn't change that.
Well, but someone could come in here, we don't know what's gonna happen, and so we need to be looking at this language, uh, for that next step as well. Um. I understand that we may not believe it needs to be, but someone's gonna come up with the idea, well, it's owned by a large timber privately owned timber company, and so it definitely should automatically fit into the forest district.
So somebody would commit for a zone change on somebody else's land?
Well, it, I'm I'm thinking of the next step.
Mm-hmm.
This next.
But, uh.
Oh.
Elected officials or the next planning commissioner can come in and look at this and say, oh, look at all the Russian timber, let's change all that to Forest Forty, is that what you're concerned about that?
Yes.
Cause half, half this group is up to somewhere.
I would say, uh, what's, what's up here now, I would say most of it.
Okay.
All right, so what do we want to do here? Well, I, you know, I I we certainly wouldn't want to see that, Matt, but, so what's your suggestion?
That we go ahead and put that qualifier in there regarding the access.
We'll say it, say it, say it again.
I I believe we need to go ahead and and put a, well, you know, a qualifier in there, uh, that, you know, these are remote parcels, you know, uh, in areas of the county where few or no access roads have been constructed.
But that in and of itself is not necessarily a completely accurate description, because there are also public lands that are on uh, major roads or accessible via major county maintained state maintained roads.
There are, I mean, I.
So I think we need to explicitly say that all of the public lands owned by the state with that are are in this zoning district.
It's out right now, so I added back in to Matt's concern. So being now where it's use of, use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated as remote ag forest land, the comprehensive plan. Remote ag forest land is located in remote areas of the county where fewer no access roads have been constructed. These areas include most of the state lands, federal lands and privately owned lands, which are managed for forest production and recreation. We can probably take out in recreation.
No, I think that's appropriate, it is, yeah.
Okay, well, we're talking recreation for.
For the public lands.
Public land.
Public land, yeah.
Okay.
Or public land recreation, because you know, there's an awful lot of, awful lot of, uh, forest land and 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 state land as well that butts right up against recreation.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah. I mean, it's used for like salivating and side by sides.
Endowment parcels of.
Three hundred yards from Forest Service land is. Endowment, they're not automatically open for public use. It's not the purpose of them. They have a lot of, are those individual sections down in the Blanchard area, you know, checkerboard. Because of where they are, they've got to be great service and all that and stuff, but.
Other, other.
One of Forests, Forest Service lands. Are open, well, Forest Service are, so I'm saying, it's just the endowment lands. The the Idaho Department of Lands and.
I think Forest Service lands by default.
I'm not sure that the endowment, the endowment lands aren't closed.
Um.
Mark, we've had so many times from IDL coming in here and say, you gotta understand, people, these are not open for public use, we designate what are.
We, I just made, I was just on a, I was just on a field trip with IDL.
Yeah.
And we went through, you know, where the Priest River Experimental Forest is.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's Forest Service, and then we went on a tour in in the endowment land, on some of those East River tributaries.
Right.
And the guy from IDL said they're off there to open.
Well, that particular area might be. Probably is. It's just that they testified here so many times.
Yeah.
So that means they are certain of the endowment lands, the state board has said, okay, those are open for, others are not. So how do you make a decision? Uh, you have to talk with IDL. Cause there's been so many times during hearings here, IDL has come in and said, no, we we're being polite about this, they're not open for public recreation. These are producing timber, so we don't want. Because.
So I, but the only issue here is whether or not we say that they're not open to public.
I mean.
I don't think we say that, because I don't think we, you can say that, like, like.
Yeah, I. Yeah, it it it. People are gonna start using this to say, well, look, I could go on this public land, even if it's state land. And it might not be the case, so. Not properly worded. Um. Check the resource agency.
I'm still struggling with the second sentence of B.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, uh, there's six hundred some odd acres out in Sable, BLM land. It's in this zone. Right off, it's right off of Sable Road, it's not exactly a remote.
Or the beach, I mean, Camp A, Sable Road.
Yeah, it's not exactly remote.
It's not modeled up.
Or, and there's, there's plenty of access roads. And you probably could say the same thing for some of the Forest Service land around, uh, Garfield Bay as well. So I don't think it's all remote, and I don't think it always has few or no access roads, that's a characteristic of a lot of it, but I don't think that's sufficient.
A lot of the claim.
That's why I say it's, it actually is, I think we tried to get all of the state and and federal lands, maybe not all the state lands, because some of those, and maybe I guess not all the federal lands either, because you have the lease law. Issue, right?
Yeah.
Those are not, those are not included here. I don't know how to define it, I guess, but but the way we've done it here, I don't think is completely accurate.
No, it's not, it's not really completely accurate. And, you know, whether or not you consider you know, for certain roads access or not, I mean, there's a lot of those, there's a lot of people that access them, I do it all the time.
Yeah.
Summer and winter.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want to change this to this?
Well, I guess, but I don't know, we don't know what it is. Cause I don't think the way it's written yet, even the way it's it's changed up here is.
Put it, put it in the bargain box.
Really leads you to. Well.
I think, I think we need to just say that basically it's public land. And not go into the remote thing of it, because remote is subjective, what's remote.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we describe remote as uh, you or no access roads have been constructed.
But that is.
That's, that's not, that's not true either, is the problem.
Like you said, that BLM land, which is our backyard. It's accessed by one, well, it's not on Sable Road, it's on Quigger Bay Road, but Camp A.
And the Forest Service.
County maintained roads.
Forest Service land is in my backyard, and that's, there's plenty of access, so.
Yeah.
I started this with saying, please define linear lines, and I was about to suggest big language, so stop.
Help me understand, why do we need any of this anyway? What's the whole point of this section? I mean, what is it covered after you get done with A?
Because, back to that again, yeah.
Why do we need more than that?
So when someone is changing from one zone to another, we call back to three point two to figure out are you, is your land described better as your current zone or as the zone that they want to go to? So you have this list, the criteria essentially for what describes a zone.
I can see that when we get down to some of the more urban type on the other end of the scale, but on this end of the scale, I don't know that there's gonna be many people coming in to try and say, I want to take all this land and move it back to.
It's the other way around, I'm in Forest Forty, I'd like to go to R five. And if you look at the property and it's described better as Forest Forty, then it should stay in that zone versus the zone we want to go to.
I think again, A covers that we're trying to preserve.
We could, or it's my head, so.
Yeah, so that's wrong.
But, so I, we didn't, we didn't designate anything as remote ag forest, the conflict.
No.
We just did. No, I think we just call it ag forest, uh, I think we got rid of roadwares.
Yep.
Well.
They're saying.
It wasn't ag forest or just regular forest?
Oh.
It was just forest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could be wrong.
It was ag forces. It's called remote forested land. That's important.
So.
So we should use that same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For for B, I think we need to come up with a way to to say that it's all of public lands, but identify the exceptions. Cause it's not the least lots, either state or federal, and there, I don't know if there are any other exceptions that I'm aware of, but basically it's all, all the state, federal land with, with those exceptions. And then the other, and then I don't know how you want to characterize the, the private holdings that we put in that land use designation, but that last sentence, I think, does it quite well, and privately owned lands which are managed from forest production.
Uh. You know, the current, the current zoning.
Many large tracts of privately owned lands that are managed for forest production will be out of the game.
So the current, the current zoning. Some of the federal lands.
Bigger than forty acres.
Some of the federal lands that are leased actually have zoning designations like recreation. So even that's not. Completely, it's a mishmash.
Yeah.
We, I would. I tried to address that, but, yeah, I got shot down.
It didn't work.
But. You know, for instance, the two Hills and Elkins Resorts are both recreation and certain federal land. And then there's a lot of lots that are federal land or, or leased, and I don't, I think we tried to put them in a, you know, least of land use designation that was recreation, and like that didn't work.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, I can't, I don't recall what the zoning is on those. What is the zoning on those federal lease lots?
Depends on hills and stuff. Um, some of them are Forest Forty. Some of them are remote forests, some of them are ag forests.
So be, so the ones around, if you just look for, for Hills Resort is north and south of that, those are, those are federal lots. Yeah, most, most of those are zone rural five.
How far north is this hills, is it up here or down there?
Yep, down there.
It's down there, right, down there, right there.
Yeah. Yep, summer five, summer rec. Um, I'm thinking of the other side of north, like up here.
That's all private land there.
It's all private, and you have a bunch of R five. R five. I don't, a bunch of R five, a bunch of R five.
Quarter acre lots.
And then here, this is, this is what's great, because this is, um,
Oh, yeah.
That's remote forest.
Yeah.
And then it doesn't have a color.
Yeah, we discussed that before. I don't think they want something established on that, that was part of the, that people are recreation.
And are those, those are, it's all private land, or is that least, are those least lots?
They used to be lease lots.
If they've enabled.
Never stayed lease lots.
Um, I actually have a layer from that shows the, in second. Where's that at? So that is the those are endowed lands. We can see like there's, yeah, some of these are still endowed lands, these, but a lot of those have been sold off. The layers of color just from that.
Well, those are all staying leases.
All of them were, and some of them are still leased endowed lands, some of them are not. So some of those we have jurisdiction over, it doesn't stop us from establishing zoning on. Uh, but it's just so when it does switch hands, the zoning areas are here. Yes, there's some problematic spots, right?
So.
Make me just say generally that this, that is, this generally includes public land, all public lands. But not all, all, all public.
It's a generally include. So. That's what I was gonna say earlier and stop myself, though.
Be vague.
It's, it's vague, but it's, it's accurate, right? Cause it does generally include the state lands, federal lands, privately owned lands, which are managed for first protection, right, protection.
Right.
But private land for recreation is also together, I gotta, we have a whole recreations out in the street for that. But I think Dave gave a good point on scale, like generally there, you know, forty acres or larger.
Mm-hmm.
And for these purposes, right, these uses.
Mm-hmm. You want to put something in there about size?
I wouldn't, because there's well, it is a forty acre minimum.
You can say these general, these are generally.
Large tracts of land.
Or you can say no less than forty acres.
Great, forty acres.
Yeah.
Um, are there spots of of, um, either state or federal land that are less than forty acres?
No, but it, it then differentiates the type of, uh, the type of recreation we're talking about.
Well, if any remaining leased lands, probably be less than forty acres, right?
Substantial.
Yes. So. Um.
I'm just thinking that, you know, I, I'm looking at the.
And I don't know, Hills, Elkins, I don't know how big they, are they?
They're not forty acres.
Not forty, yeah.
Don't put in.
So these.
So there's a few examples right there.
These properties are generally at least forty acres in size and include.
Mm-hmm.
And include most of the state lands, federal lands, or privately owned lands, which are managed for production, forest production and recreation. And that describes it better to what we actually want.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So if someone comes in, or if we find one that's thirty eight acres and it's forest and owned by, okay, jungle. Kind of vague, but it's still somewhat specific, more specific to what you know that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so. We, uh, can we move on to Ag Forest?
That was the easiest of, yes, good job.
Yeah, well, this is, uh, Ag Forest is almost completely wrong.
Yeah. I almost want to say, do you even want to try to retain any of this or scrap it, just start rewriting? So all of these are, um, you have them, they're all formatted the same way, right? It has a descriptor, and then it has like a comp plan, right? So you have a description here, and then the comp plan designation of these types. See. Dave just encouraged on this one, too.
Well, I think we need to so the first sentence, um, you know, really concentrates on agriculture and forestry pursuits. Second sentence, I think is more it's actually more of what we were trying to get at. Which was to maintain a rural character, integrity of forest and woodlands, blah, blah, blah. You know, viable aqua- agricultural pursuits may be feasible, not part, that can be feasible, may be feasible. Or I guess can be, and that's not a patient extraneous. To avoid fragmentation of forest and farms, that's definitely part of what we were trying to get at. Yeah, I don't know that we need that big, long first sense. I mean, the, the, the perfect example. Is the property that Tess was describing where she was saying, well, you know, really, you can't do anything. Uh, productive agriculturally here, so therefore should be rural five or something.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to get away from that kind of description.
Uh, I, I agree and I think the, the, the second sentence is the most important one. And the other thing that I always find interesting is in that first sentence, we don't say anything about residential uses. Right, yeah, but on AF ten and AF twenty. Uh, I'd argue virtually every lot in the county that exists is primarily residential.
Yeah.
Yes, there may be, uh, uses along with it.
Exactly.
But it's primarily a place where people live.
So if they want to live in equal agricultural.
Right, right, I mean, they may do all kinds of ag things, but. But it's.
Maybe they did.
So.
And that's, that's quite a distinction against the remote forest. The A one. Kind of, kind of goes into the.
Yes, it does, yeah.
But it. It almost seems like A one should be generally referenced in the premium. So something.
There's so include maybe residential limit, testing limits.
So do we want to?
We need to take out the efficient farming thing.
Do we wanna have a, a complete separate section for ag forest twenty versus ag forest ten? Are they distinct and different? And do you wanna include them under one, like this is format? I'm just trying to like, before we get too far into this.
Yeah.
And then we start talking about the two different sizes.
Let's talk about the differentiating factors.
There we go.
Um. I mean, I, I had a comment about, uh, one D. B one D, I guess it is. This is now AF twenty, characterized by ag or forestry uses. Um. I don't think that's distinguishing characteristic because, hey, you'd say the same thing about AF ten. And you may say the same thing about a lot of R fiber as well. So I don't think that's a. A characteristic that we can hang our hat on and say, this is where you're gonna put AF twenty. Because say the same thing about AF ten. Uh, we talked about, um. And, and I think, I don't matter, and I'll, somebody commented on slopes, we wanna get rid of slopes. Um. I think, to me, again, I'll go back with, what, what should distinguish between ten, AF ten and AF twenty? And R five as well. Is proximity and access to the major arterials in the county. So I think it's both characteristics in my mind. It's both the proximity to the major arterials. And the characteristics of the roads that are, and the road network that is built to get there. Um. And that's what we talked about when we, in the, in the conflict.
Right.
And then in, we also wanna, I think we were gonna avoid dealing soils as well.
Yeah, yeah, I have also. Well, maybe we can say. That AF ten is. Is, is, has a higher residential density. And, uh, would be characterized by smaller scale farming. And proximity to. And forestry activities. I mean, i- i- in a way, it's similar to, to the, the mode that Sagal chose. Bands of areas further out, further out you go, the larger the lot size, parcel size. And therefore the, the lower population density and house density further out. Essentially not relying on a skinny little road to provide access to a very dense area. So, again, you can think about it, I'm thinking of Selly Valley. You know, we've seen over the, over the decades, that area closest to ninety five has gone into five acre or smaller lots. And then it goes bigger, and then you get up there on, on Upper Gold Creek and stuff, and there are twenty acre lots and it's a subdivision. It's, it's nice. So is, is the description of AF ten, it's here, is it, is this accurate? Says the areas may be within or adjacent to areas of city impact or where lands are afforded. Fire protection, access to standard roads and other services. Is that a distinguishing characteristics of AF ten?
Adjacent to areas of city impact is, is.
I don't think so either.
And there's some of, and I don't know about, but it's not a single. Fire protection. Um.
Well, it's a higher residential density, so that's maybe fire protection is a characteristic.
Think it goes back to your comment, right? If you're gonna have better roads, you're likely to have better services that go along, but I. And, and, and also, it's also proximity to major arterials, I mean. Sagal Road is a great road. When you get far enough away from ninety five, and it's a long trip.
Well, that's.
And, and so I think as Don was saying. Uh, in, and I apologize for always using Sagels as an example, but that's what I'm familiar with. I think of layers as you get further and further away, east or west from ninety five, you should go to lower and lower density. In general, and that's how you determine where's R five, where's AF ten, and where's AF twenty. It's actually very little AF twenty on the east side of Sagal, I think there's some maybe on the west side, but yeah. And then I think of our two and two hundred and maybe fifty seven. North of. The lake as, as being the major arterials. Don mentioned Selly, you know. Closer to, closer to ninety five, closer to two hundred.
Over Culver and the two hundred.
Have the higher density.
Yeah.
If you get further away from those two major arterials, even though the road, road quality doesn't really change, right? Culver and Culver is the same road all the way up as you go north of two hundred, but if you get further and further away. By definition, almost, you're getting more remote, less services and, and, and I'd expect to see lower and lower density. And the same thing as you get further east from ninety five.
It's interesting, fire protection issue is, is interesting because. Those rural districts out there like that, they, the one up there, are next to the Backriver Stores Fire Station. That's right on Rapid Lightning Road to go, so that it's quick to get up there, up to Upper Gold and so forth. So that's covered. So it's, it's an interesting mix because service is available there. There's no sheriff's office, if the sheriff comes, it comes from Boyer End. All the way up there, well, that's, that's, that's the thing, so. That's what we're trying to get at with this, this, uh, length of travel or time travel away from arterials or serviced hubs. To say, we don't wanna start putting heavy density up there because the travel time, the response time is really.
Well, if there'd be any situation, if, if we were able to tie it into like Dave said, to the. Size of the road, condition of the road. Would there be any situation where that wouldn't work for? So. Even before you get to fire or any other services, if you just start up with roads and use the roads, road access and proximity. Is there any situation where that wouldn't work to distinguish a ten from a twenty versus a five versus?
It's hard to, hard to picture it. I have trouble, I, I always connect, what's the road there for? To get people in and out, to get services in and out, to get deliveries in and out. And that's all related to distance and time trail. So.
And it may come down to which came first, the road or the zone?
Yeah, I don't know if there's ever been a, a conscious connection between the roads and the zones. It, it always says it in there, but what does it mean? You know, good roads, what is, what does it mean? Is that a deciding factor? Uh, I'm sorry, and then what if, so, well, I'll, I'll upgrade the road.
Well, it, but, but again, if, I think I was asking before, when we were talking about the conflict, if the road does get up in the remote possibility. That the road gets upgraded, well, then maybe that's okay to change the density. Right, if that's one of the key distinguishing factors between where we're gonna put low density and where we're gonna have high density. And if the conditions change, okay, well, you reevaluate that. And maybe fire service is worth mentioning. Again, I, sorry, let's go back to my neighborhood, but.
Yeah.
We have a fire station in East Sagal.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think, is there one in, on the west side of ninety five out that way? I don't, I don't think there is one, it's didn't. Matt, do you know? Is there a fire station out there west of ninety five and in Sagal?
Well, yeah, of course, we have the Sagal Fire Station there.
Just west of ninety five.
Right, and then we have.
Far, far west, like now, something analogous to the station at Bottle Bay.
Right, well, no, there, there is one down, there is one down Dooford, uh, down there by Willow Bay. It's, it's, uh, we, it's not currently staffed, but, uh, we do keep apparatus there. Yep, yep. Uh, yeah, yeah, and then they also have one down by, um, on, well, I thought, I don't know if we still have, Sagal still has that one. Uh, Eric can probably answer that, he probably has to drive by it every day if it's still there.
If there's one in Coca Lala, that's what you're talking about.
Yes, yes, and because I know what, you know, when I was on the board here around four or five years ago. Uh, we kept equipment and appar- apparatus at, at all those stations, um. But, uh, as far as staff, no, none of those, you know, Bottle Bay, Willow Bay, Coca Lala, none of those are staffed.
I believe there's somebody who lives at Bottle Bay now.
Oh, okay.
He's full time north side, but on his days off, all, all the time they live at the station on Bottle Bay.
Yeah, okay.
He's there, so on his days off from north side, he'll put a fire or whatever, so it'll be a mess though.
Got to what we were saying, is there any reason why we couldn't use roads as a primary stand in between? By chance, is it a vague zone as a starting point?
I think we kinda did that already, right? It's been background discussion, but we never landed on it, is it the road itself or is it? The, the length of the road? You know, that's a part of discussion too, is the further out you go.
Here's a good question, I mean, east side road is a county owned and maintained road. Should all the properties that have access to that be ten acre zone?
Yeah.
Like, is that gonna be the distinction? I'm just trying to look at like real world examples.
Put it on the map.
It's like, there's a bunch of twenties, right, that's on a county owned and maintained road. People that live on, uh, and I've been through some, the zone change in the middle there. Where they come in and say that road is really subpar, it's not the standard. Yes, the county maintains it, but they do a horrible job of it, yada, yada, it's like, you hear all the complaints and like, well. But it still is a county owned and maintained road, so they approved these, these sort of changes. So, and that was a, a big distinguishing factor, um, on this zone change on the set up here.
Yeah.
So you can look through Selly Valley, it's another good example. They give a bunch of county owned and maintained roads that have twenty acre lots.
And that's, that's one of the, Selly Valley is one of the areas where the density of the county road system is the highest. Other areas like Bay and so forth, and it's not, it's all private roads and, oh. But look at that, I mean, that's, that's a, a banner counted, that's a very robust. It's all spaghetti going out into the interlands, but.
Sure. So there's your county maintained is the moving on green.
Yeah.
So.
That's all county maintained.
Yeah, it's surprising. Those are arterials, and then you put the county maintained.
When you can overlay the fire district, you can kinda see how far the fire district goes on it.
That's, all that together, that paints the picture. How are we providing services? If there's gonna be any self limited factors in all of this, it's the, it's the provision of services. That's why I've been trying to press on the service providers. Are you just saying, we'll just keep up, we'll just keep up, we'll just keep up? Is there a limiting factor to that? It, it takes money and you just found out, fire district, you're not gonna pass levies unless you can really show the need. So. Be serious. Don't keep saying, oh, we just keep up. All the way to power and everything else.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we all think of moments? And come in with some suggestions at the next meeting on each of these. I think this, this one is, this one's gonna be the hardest, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, but I think they all. Need some, some work. They will do, so let's, let's kind of. Do that for our homework for the next. Uh, the next meeting, and then I would say. That included in that is whether or not we either eliminate the Rural Service Center, rename it, or re-describe it. I think, I think it'd help, be helpful to go through all of these. Uh, descriptions and probably even some of the use tables to see whether or not we need that zone going.
I will go through as well and, um. Try to at least update naming conventions, like I, I see Alan highlighted the urban. Um. I'll try to just capture those, uh, for the new naming conventions as proposed, um, and then I'll also, like I said before, we. We as in the planners, while I was out, they, they went through about half of these tables. I'll, I'll go through the rest of those with them in the next couple of weeks and make some more edits to this, and some suggestions, so.
That would be helpful, um, and then, uh.
And then I can refine that CUP list and try to get all the zones out to go as well.
Oh, I, I had a question on, uh, on use table, just matter of how, how they formatted it. Like, for instance, on the residential use table, one, it looks like the caretaker's residence was eliminated.
That's a suggestion.
Okay, I wasn't sure why.
Well.
Well, I guess we'll, we'll get into that. Yeah, it gets replaced by one single, I think it's two or three of those kind of similar definitions, I think it's, it's.
Caretaker's residence is in two different spots, it's in the residential use table, and then it's in the accessory use table. Which no one ever looks at, it's just, it's, it's one of those use tables, it's down at the very bottom. Um, and then the, the permitted uses are different in each one, and then the descriptions on them are, are different, so. One, there's a conflict in the code, two, I think the caretaker's residence was the idea of an accessory dwelling unit before we had the U code. So if you look at what the ADU is doing, it's essentially doing what their caretaker's residence was trying to accomplish. With better standards, so I say we just eliminate it, because it, it's been one that's been kind of. It's only been used a couple of times that I'm aware of, and they're trying to circumvent and the, the U code by using that, so.
So I would suggest that if we get through. I mean, if, if you have time, take a look at the use tables, cause I think those, those didn't all work very.
They do, and I, that's what I was trying to do with the CUP list, is give you a, at least an understanding as to what the demand has been. For the different uses, cause there's a lot of stuff in here that I think no one's using. Um. Like, it just hasn't been a, a high demand of, so.
Duplexes in our ten areas.
Well, duplexes in.
Be a duplex on twenty acres.
Duplexes in the, uh, rural cert or rec and the Alpine Billip Zones. Why they're con- conditionally permitted, I don't know, but there's a number of CUPs for duplexes.
Yeah.
You'll see multifamily and some other older uses that were conditionally permitted in that list, it's kind of interesting. Okay.
Does anybody happen to know, does the, does fire or EMS publish? A- any response time data based on location in the county?
I have no idea.
I think they haven't.
I mean.
I could envision if they had concentric rings, so you know, you're gonna be five minutes out here, ten minutes, whatever. I mean, that could be useful.
I wonder, I wonder if they had that information when they were doing those informational sessions on the levies. He never directly said it, the chief didn't. No, uh, it was kind of.
Well, he talked about how they were gonna respond.
Right. Right.
Cause, cause today oftentimes they show up with one person. Who's at the, on duty at the fire station. And it's one of his fundamental purposes of the, of the levy was to try to always be able to show up with two people.
Yeah.
So we wanted to have two people on duty at all times, twenty-four seven, so, which he can't do today. Um, so he talked about that, but that's about as specific as he got, at least at the talk, I think.
Yeah, cause it, it's, it's just that, it's, it's conflicted because of the fact that you get one showing up, so what is your response time for the bar?
Right, right. What am I, I'd be interested even, even if it was just, in the case of fire, what does it take for that one guy to show up? I mean, he doesn't sit around and twiddle his thumbs for somebody else to get there, but.
No, no, he gets.
So he gets into it, um, and then EMS set similar data. I mean, that could be, that could have an impact on, on how we've established where these zones are, you could establish some criteria, right? That, if you're, if you're within a fifteen minute response time, that could be one that's, if you're within a twenty minute response time, that's a different density.
And that, and that's.
And again, that's something that if the response time approves, then in the future.
What you do. That's. Or somebody, you, you, you end up denying something because the response time, it's, well, I'll, I'll pay to have that upgraded. Yeah, I'd say, okay, but how far do we wanna go on that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's hypothetical, very fringe hypothetical, but still, it's like Camp Bay Road. Camp Bay Road got funded by the developer and it's paved. And it's changed things. Well, yeah, but it, it kicked it over the limit and it made it so that the county could do it. I don't know what happened with uh Monarch Road's now paid.
I know, I, I saw that, scratching my head about that one.
Yeah, and there's another one, plus for the first time ever, Eureka Road has mag chloride on it.
Hmm.
You know, what's happening? The county's saying, we're gonna take care of these things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good.
Well.
But.
What a good question, what I could try to do is get someone from Rodden Bridge here at your next meeting, cause they can probably answer a lot of the. The questions of why are you guys doing this versus that, what's the long-term plan? Because they, when I talked with Jason, I meet with him at least once a month, usually a couple times a month. Um, Jason Topper, Rodden Bridge Director, and uh, generally they have some unanticipated revenue, right? When they get it, it's like half a million dollars of anticipated, it's not like it's, here's ten grand to go buy some, a desk, or, or new furniture.
Yeah.
It's, here's half a million dollars, and it's specifically from this source, and it's restricted funds to doing this type of work, so. They have a priority list of, of their roads, of what needs to be mag chloride, and what they're gonna add to um, the, you know, what gets paved and, and they have a whole. Process on how to, how they evaluate that list, so, and as funding comes in, they just work really down the list.
Maybe it was limited, but, but I was mentally, I knew they had a priority list.
Yeah.
What I was mentally struggling with is why Monarch Road was high on that list.
No idea.
But maybe it was, that was, that, that was what, they got a bucket of money and, but the next road, they gotta afford to pave Monarch Road.
Yeah, it could be like the length of the road versus how much funds and they go down the list until they find it.
Well, and then just rebuild, just rebuild Garkville Bay Road entirely.
Yeah. Which it, which it needed.
Oh, it needed it bad. The road never was charted the first place, and the cow passed it, when they got oil. Anyway, things like that, but um, yeah, we do have criteria analysts and priority list, but.
It, 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 their insight into what their priority list is might be interesting also.
Yeah.
Cause that would give us some clues about where they think. The traffic is, that, and that needs to be addressed with upgraded road standards, upgraded road.
Cause if, if roads purely are a limiting factor. We need to know how limiting, it's just a matter of time. And even then, if it's, okay, well, twenty years out, that's gonna be taken care of. Do we do an interim zoning kind of thing? County's plan is available online, Jay?
Yeah, the uh, the Long Rice Transportation Plan is.
Yeah.
It's in, it's in under public works and.
I thought I'd seen it before, but I don't know how much detail if that's got a list of the actual current roads that they.
I don't know, I know it's, it's formatted by an engineer, so.
Uh, never one.
Well, I give them a hard time because it's fee schedule like on page two hundred and thirty, so, but it's adopted, like, how do I find where your fee schedule is, man?
Yeah.
So they were gonna pull that out, like, cause ours is adopted, like, here's the fee schedule, right, you click on the button and there it is. So I know, like, formatting wise, it's, I'm sure it made sense to the guy who did it, I know they're, they're working on it.
So I, I would also suggest maybe, maybe contact. Uh, there's, there's the same chief, the, for Northside and.
Yeah, Armstrong.
Yeah, Armstrong, yeah, see if they have, like, I think Dave said, concentric circles. Well, it'd be good, it'd be good, I, every time I see him, I ask him that question, how far do you think your department can go into the future to provide service?
Well, how about now?
Well, I mean, right now, I mean, right now, right, but so. He's thinking along those lines, that I'm getting to.
And if, you know, I would, you know, you might, you might even talk to Dave Bowman, I mean, he seems to know a lot about that stuff, so he might be able to get it.
Yeah, at least encourage Jeff to.
Take us tell, you know. We tell Dave what, you know, what we're interested in. He might be able to get it up, so. Yeah, he's not here.
First time in how many months?
Everybody needs a vacation.
He's on vacation. All right, so, does that sound like a good plan for the next meeting?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite Jason and Matt from Rodden Ridge, uh, Jeff Lindsay from EMS, um, and then. Um, Jeff Armstrong from Fire. And then I, one of my, one of my employees is volunteers for the Priest River area fire, so I can ask her, she can get her chief here. Um, and then I can just send an email to all the fire districts and ask them, can anybody attend this meeting either remotely?
That'd be great, I mean, it's, it, yeah.
I'm sure you will, but obviously explain to them what we're trying to do, that we're trying to work on the zoning thing, and that we want their input to help us zone better so that they get. Better service provisions. I would think they'd be interested, in other words.
And the question should be framed. We're not looking for something that's gonna limit growth, we're looking for factors that will inadvertently on themselves, say there's a restriction on, on. Growth or density in the areas, and stuff along those lines, we're not. We're not, we don't wanna come across as.
Well, we're just, we're looking at doctors, I would.
Yeah. Say what should, what should be done?
Yeah. All right. So you have a new staff person here?
What's that?
Have a new staff person here?
Have you guys met Dylan?
No.
I'm sorry. This is Dylan.
Hi Dylan.
Hey, nice to meet you guys, I, I was here, I think the last one was kinda hiding.
Oh, you weren't?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't here.
You was here, that's.
But Dylan's the new uh, hearing coordinator, so you'll see emails from him, and you'll help put together agendas and minutes and all that for us.
Very good. Very good.
Very good, good. All right, so uh, that being, is there anything else to put on the next agenda?
I think that's plenty. So I think, well, well, so what I understand, we're gonna continue working on the zoning descriptions, I had a feeling that would take probably three or four meetings to get through. I'll send invites all those to those outside uh, entities and then see who, either we can get responses or see if anybody got their person, so.
The other thing I would suggest before the next meeting is, kind of refresh our memory of, so what's in the land use component?
Yeah.
Cause I think that's. Obviously relevant, you know.
Hmm, you should do that before we. Yeah.
Uh, but also, just for these descriptions.
Well, yeah, tied all together, but to keep our mind fresh. I guess the other part, yeah, we've got that chopping list of priorities from the board, things to look at. But. We've got a situation that's coming up, I mentioned it last time. We got three or four people on the commission whose term is up the end of September. And maybe four, maybe five. What do we need to accomplish between now and the end of September? What are the absolute key things that we need to accomplish? And, and then line them out, they wanna see a schedule from us, what we're working on. Cause I, I think if we get, if we get through in three meetings with these descriptions things, then what are we gonna do? For August and, and September? And we need to use that time productively as much as we possibly can, so.
Three meetings is the end of August, probably.
Yeah, well, true.
True, just as, on that note, I'll be advertising for the.
What in July?
I'll be advertising for those vacancies for all commission vacancies beginning of August. So usually I, I advertise for a couple of weeks, and then it takes a few weeks to, to interview everybody, and then, you know, you start backwards planning from.
Of the days.
From October.
Yeah.
August is usually a good time to start advertising, gain a pool, and then interviews and appointments and all that to us.
Yes. Because, yeah.
But whose terms are up, is it Matt, I believe, and?
I'm up, Dave's up, Matt's up.
I think I have two on the zoning questions as well.
Yeah. So, make it through with first meeting is the first.
All right. So that's the, that's it.
Yep.
So we're adjourned until. July fifteenth. Four thirty. In this room, fifteen hundred, Highway two.
Very good. Put that gavel there, so you can use it.